Kevin Day, Chair of the Custer County Board of County Commissioners. Today is May 10th, 2022. The time is now 10:02. And I will call to order this special meeting of the Custer County Board of County Commissioners. We have one agenda item today. And that agenda item was a motion that was made at the previous meeting that was postponed until today. And the motion that is still on the floor is a motion to appoint Brandon Shaw as replacement. Let me go ahead and finish your statement, then we'll do that. Thank you for that, sir. To appoint Brandon Shaw as replacement sheriff until the new sheriff takes office. Now I will revert back, and if you would please join me for the pledge and make sure your cellphones are turned off. I will try to speak up a little bit. I apologize if you do not hear me. Let us know if we get too quiet. I tend to do that at times.
You can pass a mic if we have to hear.
So, once again, the motion that is on the floor is a motion to appoint Brandon Shaw as replacement sheriff. Seems like I am going out of order a lot today. Trying to get to the business at hand. Kelly, could you give us a roll call, please?
Commissioner Day.
Present.
Commissioner Canada.
Here.
Commissioner Flowers.
Present.
Attorney Clint Smith. And Clerk to the Board, Kelly Camper, present.
And we will go through audience introductions. Let's start here. We're back. Come back around here.
Becky Olson.
Rich Smith.
Neil Olson.
Gina Ferraro.
Carolyn Parker.
Bill Parker.
Lisa Frank.
Andrew Wheeler.
Jane Fieldberg.
Lisa Abrams.
Donna Goldkoss.
Ella Goldkoss.
Joni Wilcox.
Stephen Wilcox.
Jerome Watson.
Aaron Burleson.
Wendy Burleson.
David Decker.
Vince Falsiders.
Judy Greer.
Gordon Greer.
Adrian Washington.
Mark Rieckert.
Tommy Allison.
Commanders.
Amy Shaw.
McKinnon, we have tonight.
Tracey Gannler.
Jay Jack.
H.J. Buckwizzle.
Bruce Wood.
Anla.
Judy Champion.
Al Tanguin.
Terrence Gags.
Jan Johnson.
Jan Arthur.
John Goll.
Steve Cox.
Kenny Collins.
Don Ransdell.
Jan Tom Spur.
John Jeffress.
Jack Thompson.
Connie Thompson.
Pat Jeffress.
Brandon Shaw.
Who is that?
Richard Harris.
Brooke Hart.
Reggie Foster.
Okay, and I would ask if someone is speaking later to go ahead and identify yourself so we can get that on the record, please. If we do have a microphone here set up for speakers, so if you'd like to use said microphone. And make sure if you do not that you speak loud enough for those in attendance to hear you.
Can you hear him okay?
Yeah.
Just barely.
And any, any comments will be addressed to the board. If we could, please, I would lay the same ground rules down at today's meeting as we had the other day. Let's keep it respectful and address the board, and we'll keep our applause and our other comments to ourselves during the meeting if we can. Thank you very much. I do believe that we have, we have a request from Mr. Shaw to address us. I think I will call on you first, sir.
Go ahead and use the mic properly, Wes. That's best. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Thumbs up? Okay. My name is Brandon Shaw. I'm one of the candidates for the sheriff. I just want to let everybody know that I was deeply honored when Sheriff Bartley suggested that I be appointed to the sheriff in this interim fashion, although it's not interim, but that's the way everybody's thinking of it. I'm all about service over self, and that's what I was thinking was I needed to serve our sheriff's office to make sure that the transition went appropriately. Since the meeting and subsequently, it's been made very apparent that it would be inappropriate for me to be appointed as the sheriff. So I am accusing myself from that option. I know Rich and I both said we're accusing ourselves to make sure that this is fair and across the board, so it doesn't affect the election. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to contact me, otherwise I will not be taken disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Which would bring me back to our motion. So Chairman, I would move that we withdraw the motion made at the May 4th meeting pertaining to the appointment of Mr. Shaw as sheriff.
I'll say.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to withdraw the motion to appoint Brandon Shaw as sheriff. Comment, discussion between you gentlemen?
Don't have any.
Only that I don't believe it's a relevant motion, given circumstances, Mr. Shaw's comments.
What? Can't hear that.
He said, given the comments made by Brandon Shaw, that it is probably an irrelevant motion at this point anyway, but we did make the motion to remove the other motion.
Okay.
So who, who did make the original motion? Don't they have to withdraw?
No.
No? But to your point, that is the same person.
I made the original motion.
So. Okay. Other discussion from the floor. Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion to remove the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That will change the scope of discussion somewhat. I will leave it open to you gentlemen here for a minute. If anyone has something here.
That's something wrong. I'm gonna stand up because I can project better and see you, but I won't be using my, can you hear me okay? Okay, well, thank you, Brandon. That is a very noble and ethical request that you had. I appreciate that. Election, in my view, the integrity of your election plan is important. Well, in the meantime, since that time, I, Tom and Kevin, I'm sure, have been on the phone a lot. And I had made many calls to see what our options are and what we can do with the current situation. And I did reach out to several people. I reached out to the Executive Director of Custer County Sheriff's of Colorado to find out how they interpreted the statutes that we brought up last meeting. And, and, and what the obligations are of the commissioners. So I just want to read this just to set the stage. The answer I got back was that in case of a vacancy, and they gave, they went through several things she did, just personally responded to them. That in case of a vacancy, in any county office or precinct, the Board of Commissioners shall, being underlined under that, fill the same five appointments. That stands reason. In the meantime, the undersheriff has been, would be obligated to execute all the authorities of the sheriff, which I'm talking with Robert Hill as well, he's willing to stand up and do that until such time appointments made. Any person appointed this section, to this section, shall hold office until the next election or the vacancy is filled by, according to the law. So the bottom line, she says, is that there always must be a sheriff. This is what they're highlighting. And it's a very important office, someone exercising their powers and duties without lapse. That's what they're looking for. There's no specific time, but it's what we want to do, most expedient. The office of sheriff is one of the most important elected positions in this state, responsible for a variety of public safety responsibilities for Colorado citizens and county citizens. Leadership, experience, and training are necessary traits to successfully lead and guide the office. Leaving the position unfilled in any county would be a great concern to the county sheriffs and Colorado's Board of Directors and of critical importance to the citizens of the county. The transitioning following the sheriff's departure should be accomplished with as little disruption and delay as possible. She sets the stage and says, no, let's do it by the statutes that are applicable. I then reached out further to the county attorneys. Our attorney, of course, has given us his advice. And we are obligated to make sure that we understand those, that advice and can reach out where possible. As a matter of fact, our attorney has the ability to reach Colorado County Attorney's Association as well. So I did. I did talk with the county attorney for El Paso County, who has gone through several things much like this. And he invited Clint. He wanted to make sure that he was, it was just exactly that. It was listening and understanding how other people interpreted the regulations, not trying to step on our attorney. And he invited Clint to give him a call if he wants to, to understand why he felt that it was relevant, that there is a difference in this office, two offices. And he stated this way, says, the first thing he gave me was a statute, kind of Colorado revised statutes, 1-4-206. And in that, it just sets up back in 1982. I'm gonna read it. It's very short. "In a general election in 1982, and every four years thereafter, one county clerk and recorder, who shall be ex officio reporter of the deeds and clerk of the Board of County Commissioners. One sheriff qualified pursuant to a special section, that being 30-10-501-5 Colorado revised statutes. Then another special, one coroner qualified pursuant to a different statute section, which is 30-10-601-5 Colorado revised statute." revised statute. And it goes on, one treasurer shall be appointed, like taxes, one county superintendent of schools, and most of the offices the county has been suspended or abolished, one county surveyor, and one county assessor. And, uh, if elected county, and then the term shall be filled for four years. So it just sets the stage that there are these differences. Uh, and then it says it's current, by the way, through May third, twenty twenty-two. That's current to me. Uh, in that, uh, also he points out that there's differences in the time of residents in the counties and the county requirement for commissioners, for example, to be, had to be residing in the county or district for at least one year prior to election. Whereas in the other two citations I gave you, it's to be a county resident only. So that was one guy's opinion. I then reached out to, uh, Linda Stanley, uh, as our district attorney, to see how she would interpret those regulations if there were a challenge or anything like that. And she told me I was free to use her name and she also agreed that an appointment, uh, in an appointment case, the residency requirement is just to be a county resident at the time that person is appointed to that office. So we can talk with her as well. And finally, I started to reach out to Brenda Jackson, Fremont County Attorney. And she, uh, I, I got beat to the punch because Robert Hill, our undersheriff, had already discussed it with her because he wanted, he had gone through a similar situation in Fremont County several years prior to Sheriff Barley coming up here, where they had lost their sheriff as well. And, uh, and I'm gonna quote what she told Robert. Now, if you want to ask questions, you can ask Robert. But under the Colorado Constitution, Article fourteen, Section ten, one year in residency is a county requirement for most offices. However, appointment is different under that section thirty dash ten dash five oh one county revised, Colorado revised statute. All that is required for appointment is that the person be a resident of the county. A person can change residency in a day simply by physically moving to the county with the intention of staying and making it their place of residence. So the board wants to appoint you, if you don't speak to Robert. If they do, uh, they could do that provided your residency is established quickly. However, you would not be eligible to run into the office for twenty twenty-two if elected. She goes on, uh, with that understanding. So then, uh, then I guess it's probably appropriate, if I can wait to make a nomination, but my view, my personal view right now, is that we should probably nominate, to fill the vacancy expeditiously, we should nominate our undersheriff as the, uh, appointment, to appoint him as the sheriff effective the twenty-first of May, because that's the day after Shannon, Shannon's gone, twenty. Uh, provided that his residency has been established in Custer County at that time. And, uh, then we can get Robert to speak later, but he has options for that residency and has made, uh, moves to do so. And I think that would be done probably between now and twenty, easily, uh, and we can ask Robert to prove. So those are my comments upfront, and then we can make a motion to do that. Be my recommendation to the board.
I'll be first, you go ahead.
Still did a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, a lot of text messages from everybody that's concerned about this issue. I've also been reaching out. And the one thing I am still struggling with is the fact that uh, Kevin. Sorry, I tend to get quiet. The thing I am struggling with still
Do you want this again?
Is that our attorney and our legal representation from CPSI and the represent, our legal representation, CPSI and our county attorney uh, have not changed their opinion, to my knowledge, on the residency requirement. So, right now, at this time, that is a thing that I am struggling with. That being said, our options are very few. And I know everybody has a, has an opinion. Everybody sees a simple answer. There are no simple answers to this. Uh, it is a convoluted, I shouldn't say mess, but it is, it is a very convoluted situation that we have. Uh, those are my struggles I have at this time because I do not want to do something that is not according to the laws that are put in place for us to operate and do business.
Kevin, I'm sorry, but when you were first talking, we couldn't hear you.
Okay.
Can we make it clear, you saying that our county attorney is disagreeing with what he just read and these other?
Our county attorney does not agree with the interpretation from Brenda or from Linda Stanley. He still reverts back to the constitution, constitutional requirements to state that you have to be a resident for one year and also an electorate. Uh, but that is no different for a an appointment than it is for an election. And unless there is some way, I do have a call out now that has not been returned. I don't know if there's a waiver for that. That would be an excellent solution to this. But at this time, I'm not sure. I think I will, uh, pass on down to Commissioner Flower and, uh, I know he has done more research. But, uh, still, our, our goal is to do what's best for this county and for that department. And I will just reiterate that.
Our county attorney is not here to speak to this matter?
He is not. Uh, he had surgery yesterday and is not able to be here today. Mr. Flower.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everybody. Again, I want to thank you for being here. Uh, certainly this continues to be part of the, of the political process in governing, uh, at specifically the county level. So, uh, I think all three commissioners appreciate your interest and your time. I guess I'm compelled to tell you as the audience this, commissioners already know this, that since May the fourth, this is the first time the three of us have had a conversation about this situation. Um, we have not talked on the telephone. We have not met in person. I think we've all done our own research, uh, as we saw best. And, uh, certainly our, our county attorney encouraged that so there wouldn't be the, uh, perception that the commissioners got together and decided the best way to approach us. We have not done that. So what you're gonna witness today is us fleshing out what the three of us think is best for this county after we have taken in as much information and knowledge and the facts that we deemed appropriate. So, as I'm sure everybody in the room knows, Rumor Mill was certainly healthy and operating at a high level. None of that means anything to me as a county commissioner. I don't do social media. Uh, I don't think it has a place in, in my position as governance of, of this county. Uh, but I'm certainly not immune to the Rumor Mill. I've actually told friends of mine, I don't want to know, and they tell me anyway. So we're gonna have a long, drawn out conversation about what I mean when I tell people I don't want to know what's on Facebook. I share a part of Kevin's concern about the fact that we have on retainer, uh, a county attorney to give us legal advice. I think there's a huge concern if we ask for and get legal advice and don't follow it. I've challenged our attorney on numerous occasions in Florida County Commissioner meetings, on other things. I'm not opposed to doing that. I followed up with the legal opinions that our attorney gave us, and I can't find anything that really excludes his legal advice. Maybe with one exception. The problem we get into, and if you've looked at the constitution or Colorado revised statutes pertaining to this situation, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that the legislature did not spell out all of the details when it comes to appointing an elected official. The constitution and the revised statutes talk about that person being elected. There's not a lot of language specifically, uh, to dictate how that's done to fill an appointment to an elected position. It's almost a gray area that's left up to interpretation. Well, I sure as hell am not qualified to start interpreting state law and state constitution. That's not my job. And so with that, I reached out to Attorney General Phil Weiser, who, in my opinion, is the highest elected attorney uh, in the state of Colorado. I was not able to speak with him directly. He did give me his cell phone number on a business card when he was in West Cliff last year. Don't you know, I couldn't track him down. So I couldn't get through the filter of the Attorney General's office to speak to Phil personally. But I didn't, uh, talk to, I shouldn't say talk, because I don't mean that literally. I communicated with two attorneys in the Attorney General's office about this matter. And one of them was the Assistant Attorney General for Intergovernmental Affairs, had a conversation with him. I also talked to another individual that he recommended, uh, that was, in his opinion, the most qualified attorney in the state of Colorado to hand out any opinions and thoughts concerning the peace officer standards of training. Program that all law enforcement in the state of Colorado have to, uh, be certified by. The post certification individual, uh, didn't really shed a lot of new light on anything that wasn't already written through the statute or the constitution. So, uh, nothing really new there. One of the problems, and I will follow up and talk to Phil, uh, certainly acquainted with him. The final reply I got from the Attorney's General Office was that they really, by statute, were not uh, eligible to give county governments legal advice. And I found that somewhat disconcerting because, one, how do we have an Attorney General's office if they can't give us their legal opinions on things? Again, I didn't talk to Phil, so I didn't, those words didn't come from him. Uh, they came from Curtis Morrison. So, um, again, I'm gonna follow up on that if nothing else after this whole thing is dealt with, because I do believe the Attorney General's office needs to be able to give legal opinions. But again, I, I'm not a staller on the constitution or the revised statutes. So, uh, certainly I think, uh, with Mr. Schalk's statement this morning, um, clarifies the matter and muddies the matter all in one fell swoop. I have respect and appreciate Mr. Schalk's comments. Uh, I believe in his heart, he thinks that is the right reason. Uh, in my heart, I believe the right thing to do was follow the recommendation of our sheriff, as I indicated on May fourth. That is not, uh, appropriate today, so we move forward. Now, how we move forward, you're gonna get to witness that, because I have no idea. I had people say, what are you guys gonna do tomorrow? I said, we're gonna talk about appointing a sheriff. And maybe get resolution, maybe not. And that's the best answer I can come up with. I have no idea what these two gentlemen, uh, what their thoughts are other than what you've already heard this morning. So what you've heard this morning, I heard this morning for the first time. I want to pull a document up here and read something to you. Uh, Commissioner Cannon cited it, Colorado revised statute thirty ten, thirty dash ten dash five oh one point five. Uh, and it, it's entitled qualifications. And number one says, no person is eligible for nomination, election, or appointment to the office of sheriff unless the person does the following. Now, that's the clearest language I've ever found. And I thank our county clerk uh, and clerk to the board, Ms. Camper, for forwarding this document on. Uh, number one, it says, no person is eligible for nomination, election, or appointment to the, well, sorry, I read that, or appointment to the office of sheriff unless the person, A, is a citizen of the United States, is a citizen of the state of Colorado, and is a resident of the county to which the person is to be appointed or elected. B, possesses a high school diploma or its equivalent, or a college degree. C, has had a complete set of fingerprints taken by a qualified law enforcement agency and has submitted or received evidence of the fingerprints at the time of his filing. His or her written acceptance pursuant to Section one four six oh one, sub, paragraph three. And it goes on to speak to the specifics about fingerprinting. So, from my perspective, those really are three pretty clear qualification standards that I think we need to look at today. Does that fly in the face of opposition to what our county attorney has given his legal opinion? Yes, it does. Uh, and I've read all the documents that he cited in his legal opinion to us. And nowhere in those documents does it only say a resident of the county. All of those sightings, citations that Attorney Smith gave us indicate or say needs to be a resident of the county for one year. So those are different sides of a coin that I think we're gonna have to wrestle with this morning. Now, when it really comes down to it, in my mind, I think that we're probably, at least I am, I shouldn't say we, at least I'm gonna have to wrestle with the idea of, do I want to consider looking at the law differently than what it's written? Is my interpretation of what I read to be around the bush, am I willing to disregard what the law says here? And I don't know about that. I'm convinced about a couple of things. We cannot go without a sheriff in this county. We have to have a sheriff. We are way too vulnerable to a lot of circumstances. I'm sure you all know, this county and law enforcement agency in this county is a mineral burger. Investigation and subsequent trial. We can't go through that stuff without a sheriff. The sheriff serves as a fire marshal. We can't be living in these times when Custer County has been under red flag warning every day for the last three weeks without a a sheriff that also serves as a fire marshal. So I'm all about trying to appoint a sheriff today. I may have to ask myself, am I willing to circumvent some of the law to get that done? Other counties have done it. Our attorney is aware of that. His comment to me was, just because other counties have done it, doesn't make it right for our county, and it sure as hell doesn't make it legal. And I believe him when he says that. Uh, so I guess my question to my fellow commissioners, um, would be, do you have other names of individuals that you would like us to consider for an appointment? Because I can tell you, uh, I do not have any other names, so I would be interested in hearing your thoughts on that, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Mr. Chair, can I speak? I'll use the mic if you can hear me.
I'll use the mic, you can hear me even better. Okay, in order to expedite this and get focused and make sure that we have people here that can help us, and Tom and I, Kevin, understand and make a decision that's best for you. And in order to do that, we always get conflicting information. As a matter of fact, Kevin mentioned that he talked to CTSI, so I I got just the opposite opinion. They agree that we can appoint them as long as they're resident at the time. So that's something we have to talk back and forth with. And I don't know who we talked to. He doesn't know who I talked to. So therefore, in order to get this moving on, I nominate our undersheriff, Robert Hill, to be appointed Sheriff effective twenty one May, twenty twenty two, provided he is established residency in Custer County on that date. That's my motion. And I do not have any other nominees either, just to clarify that. I need a second for that.
No, you don't. Nominations do not require a second.
All right, so that's my nomination today. And that is probably, will help us exponentially get through this and get a sheriff appointed at the right time.
And I have answered your question.
Hold on to the mic.
Do not have another name for consideration at this time either. I was exploring a couple of different options just to see what our options might be. And they all came up on a roadblock. They all hit a roadblock. There are no other names that I have that would be an option.
We're going to discuss this group.
Yes, we are.
I guess as part of the discussion on the nomination, I would ask, gentlemen, are you comfortable in pursuing this item of business based on the premise that Commissioner Cannon's nominee would become a resident? Or do you believe that the nominee, the nominee needs to be a resident at the time the nomination is made?
I think I might ask undersheriff Hill a question on that. Have you established residency at this time?
Two of the three have formally offered their place on that date to be a resident of the county.
But at this time, at this time, you are not, but you would be by?
Currently, I am not.
All right, my view is the way it reads, that he's not required to be at the time of nomination. He's required to be a resident at the time he takes office.
Commissioner Cannon, I would challenge your nomination a little bit. I'm not, I don't believe that we can amend a nomination. But I would respectfully request that you consider restating your nomination so that the nominee would take office at twelve oh one P M on May twentieth. And the reason I ask that, sir, is Sheriff Barley has resigned at twelve o'clock noon on May twentieth. I don't even want to risk running a half a day or eighteen hours without a sheriff. Thank you.
I don't have a problem with that. The fact is all I had, because we've always referred to it as the twentieth. And it was clear that the twenty first, we did not have a sheriff. And so that's why I said that. So I don't mind stating that he's a resident effective at noon on the twentieth, twelve oh one, to be exact, on the twentieth, twenty twenty two.
Any other discussion here? I will look up to the floor.
Go ahead.
And Mr. Joe, come on up.
So everybody can hear you, whoever comes up. Come on up here and state your name so Kelly can get it down and people can hear you. And I know Fred has a voice.
Fred Joe, the chairman from way back. And Sheriff Barley and myself have been good friends. I consider myself a friend with Brandon and a friend with Rich. So this has nothing to do with politics. I was on the County Sheriff's of Colorado Board when we adopted some of the things that you discussed. And I agree that we do need guidelines. But if you get, if every one of you were attorneys sitting out there, every one of you would have a different opinion. And the attorneys do not live in Custer County. I've had this argument with them before. Sometimes there's been things come up that I have to do, or have to do, have to have done as sheriff for what I thought was best for the county. And I think in this situation, what Brandon has done is very honorable and to make it fair, because we're only talking about one, thirty days or so until the primary is over. But to me, it's Shannon had, and I've never met you before, I don't think, as undersheriff. He had confidence in you to be undersheriff when he appointed you as undersheriff to do the job. And so I feel like you are in a position that he felt comfortable in doing. I think that we did recommend Brandon. But like I said, we need guidelines. But being on that group that kind of adopted some of these and voted for these things, we have to do what's best for the county. And in my opinion, what has happened this morning with Brandon withdrawing is going to be best for the county. It will bring us back together. The county is separated right now. And I don't care what attorneys this is me, I mean, I can't speak for you guys. But as for me, they don't live in our county. None of these attorneys, even the county attorney, don't live here. I've had arguments with those, you know, in the past. And but we need to do what's best for our county. And the state does not run our county. These gentlemen run our county. So that's what I would like to see to get this thing moving. We're talking about for thirty days. We're not being sheriff, or an acting sheriff, in my opinion. You would be an acting sheriff for about thirty days, and then with all due. So that's my two cents.
I can appreciate that, but let's go ahead and try to hold that down. I would make one point of clarification. I do believe that Attorney Clint Smith does reside in Custer County. So but yeah. And let's make sure we, let's try to address the board as well if we can, please.
Peggy Collins, I am one of those dreaded attorneys, albeit none in the state. I've done all the research these gentlemen have. I'm not going to give you my opinion. But I am going to say that when the office judge came up here in our county, I looked into running, although I'm not licensed in the state at that, but doesn't matter. Because rural counties get to do lots of things that other counties don't get to do. I'm glad I didn't get the job. I'm glad that Amanda Hunter got it. Amanda Hunter was not a resident of this county until the day before she was appointed. Things can be done in rural counties.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, the reason I clap when Fred said that is that, you know, we find so many things to be divided about. It's just, thank you, Brandon, for taking the weight off. Thank you very much. It is an honorable thing to do. And thank you, Rich, for also recusing. Because I hate it when this county is divided. I hate it. You guys are my neighbors. I love you. The vote is there to do a private so that we can just vote. It isn't about us against them and all that junk. So that's why I clap for Fred seventy cent, because, see, that takes the heat off. We can come together again, let the things just thirty days. So thank you, Fred, for saying that. And thank you, Brandon and Rich, for both recusing.
Thank you. One other point of clarification that I will make is a nomination that we make, whether it's today or at a different date, will stay as the sheriff until January tenth, when the new sheriff takes office. It is, you do not nominate, you do not appoint someone for a period of time until a primary election is over. It does clearly state in statute that we will make an appointment to fill out the term until the next duly elected sheriff takes office.
And I will also point out, because I wrote that down, I will clarify later. That is the sheriff, he has all authorities, not an interim sheriff. It is the sheriff of this county with all authorities to execute his job.
Is it possible that the appointed sheriff could resign at that date and then commissioners could appoint the elected sheriff to start before January?
So the primary election is just to
See who's going to run.
Put a Republican or a Democrat or both on the November ballot. After the primary, an unaffiliated could still run. Or a write-in can still run up through July. So we don't know who's official until November.
Thank you, Bill, for that. Mr. Flower?
Yeah, I'll follow up on that. I've had that question asked to me several times. As commissioners, our job is to appoint a sheriff. That's it. Whatever happens after that, we will deal with. But my intent, if I vote to appoint a sheriff, will be with the understanding that person will be the sheriff until the new sheriff is sworn in. End of discussion for me. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. I agree with all these statements, including the fact that that allows time for that sheriff-elect to understand what the jobs are, and it's up to the sheriff that time to decide what to do with that sheriff-elect. Now, that's up to the sheriff at the time. He wants to make him an undersheriff or whatever. He can do that and go through our budget cycle and all that kind of stuff. So there's a good reason to continue this through the election. And it's a neat thing, because a lot of sheriffs get appointed without having a clue of what's going on. Or not appointed, but elected without being in the county or associated. Just a point. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Eugene Ferrero. I had the pleasure of hearing Clint Smith argue a case on March fifteenth in Denver before the Ethics Committee. Mr. Flower was present, as was I. And in his opening statement, Clint Smith made an argument which the Ethics Commission disagreed with for he had misquoted the law and struck his claim that the Ethics Commission in this particular matter had no authority. As such, it brings question to my mind, while I have great respect for Clint Smith and his opinion as a lawyer and a person, I've met him on a number of occasions. He's a very nice gentleman, but my point is this. Lawyers are sometimes wrong, okay? I'm sure that's, I'm sure, I'm sure that's a surprise to many, including some of the commissioners. But I would like the commissioners to please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sir?
Name's Vince Ballside, has been resident a short time. What I want to address the board is, if you're in a community, have you actually reached out to the community and seen if there's a qualified person willing to be interviewed? It's one of those things. I've been through this before with numerous sheriffs. And I've seen the sheriffs take the, the Board of Supervisors where I came from, take the time and say, okay, we have the sheriff's recommendation. We need to see if there's anybody else qualified to do this. Commissioners, have we done this? And are we willing to take maybe a couple of days to reach out to committee, use print, ask if there's someone qualified, willing to step up and can do this, who's a resident? Like I said, has the knowledge and the qualifications. I haven't seen that with you, and I would like to see it happen, have some consideration. This way, our community is protected. I want to thank Brandon for recusing himself. I think that was very professional. I want to thank Rich for doing the same. And I want to say, we can't take Shannon's recommendation lightly, but it's pretty much new now. So we need to do something to rectify this. I think undersheriff Underhill can run the department. Obviously, he's undersheriff for a reason. So if we decide to go against what the county attorney says and go with what other legal opinion is, I think we all in the committee would appreciate that. But I want to see further steps taken, if we may. Thank you.
Okay, let me answer part of that real quickly from my point of view. And I know Tom and Kevin have also. I personally did reach out to many people and got no's in many cases, maybes in others. And then weigh that off, those options against what's best for the county, given the continuity of the office. And that's why I personally selected Robert Hill. And by the way, the attorney are not, they do not have the authority. We're people accountable, and so we are obligated, each one of us know this. Advice is advice, and I'm accountable and to you all and to the, to the, to the good of the citizens of this county. I would never, ever have nominated anybody unless I was confident that was the right choice personally.
I can't see who it is. Fred's head is too big, I'm sorry.
No, Jake Shy, lifelong resident here. There's one thing I've learned sitting on a lot of boards up here. If you're worried about getting sued, you're not going to do a damn thing. Sometimes you just got to go ahead and go against your attorney's advice to do the right thing for the county. One thing that's been hurting me, had some long talks with him. We've gone against Shannon once, we do it again, and we don't allow Robert to step up. What a screw you to a sheriff that's been here for eight years. That is a big old gut punch to a good man. He's not here right now, because if he was, his head would probably explode in here, and it wouldn't be good. I just, I challenge you guys to do the right thing. I know you're jumping through some legal hoops this side and the other, but I know each one of you. Vote your conscience. Don't vote through, don't vote with the other commissioners thinking, vote your conscience, and it'll probably work out.
Thank you.
Name's Gilbert, and I'm going to do something here that I haven't done.
Name's Gilbert, and I'm going to do something here that I haven't done. I don't think ever one is agree with Bill Cannon. The others agree with Jake Shaw. The comment I have is that at twelve oh one on May twentieth. You will have someone fulfilling the duties and responsibilities and liabilities and all that of the office of sheriff. Per C R thirty ten five oh five, that's your undersheriff. That's his job. And that, right now, we're sort of arguing over whether or not a person must be titled sheriff. Or be functioning sheriff. Similarly, we're arguing, not arguing, we're discussing the word expeditiously. Is expeditious six days or six months? Either way, we're talking about the same guy functioning as sheriff. So I agree with Jake.
Thank you.
I agree with Jim Gilbert.
Do I have any other discussion from the floor? Okay, you may.
Yeah, I want to also let the group know, the commissioners know this. No point in me talking to them. The chairman of the Custer County Central Republican made very clear that he felt. That the Republican Committee ought to have the opportunity to make a recommendation to the commissioners on who they thought the. Appointment should go to. I can tell you, that did not happen. We did not get a recommendation from the Central Committee. So I think that also needs to be reflected in the record here today. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to call for previous question. I know this motion requires a second. It will, if passed, interrupt any further discussion on the matter and take the issue and to an immediate vote.
Okay. That being said. We have a nomination on the floor. To. Appoint. Undersheriff Hill as sheriff. Until. Taking place on.
Twelve oh one.
On May twentieth. Twenty twenty two at twelve oh one P M.
Chairman, point of order, if I may, sir.
You may.
Unless my motion does not get a second, which you have not called for that yet, I want to make sure that we're clear and concise, because my motion. If passed, will not allow any further discussion from us or the people in attendance. So.
Yeah, I'll say it. I would appreciate that.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to call this question. And the question is to nominate. Okay, those in favor of calling the question?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we have a nomination on the floor for appointing undersheriff Hill. For sheriff. On May twentieth twenty twenty two at twelve oh one P M.
To remain in office until.
To remain in office until the new elected sheriff. Takes possession of said office on January tenth. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Having no other business to take care of today. I will adjourn this special meeting as a Custer County Board of County Commissioners at eleven A M.